To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George, could you do your roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Biaco.
Here.
Commissioner Guardioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rikowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker. Paul Hughes. Lisa Catania. And myself, George Needles, President.
Thank you. Welcome to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners meeting June 9th, 2022. Do the citizens comment by telephone, and we'll move along with that. So if you want to make a phone call to the, for not being in person, may participate by dialing 571-748-4021. Dial on 571-748-4021. And enter in the PIN 357-1690 pound. That's 357-1690 pound. On mute your phone by pressing star six, please state your name, address, prior to making your comment on the telephone. We'll give a few minutes here. Take note, there was no phone calls in for participation for the public. We'll go to the floor here at the building. State your name and address and telephone number if you want to get it back to you.
Hi, my name is Judy Stang. I live at 1602 Plum Street here in Upper Chi. And I just wanted to bring some comments and maybe some updates. First of all, I am very happy and proud to say that the Chi pride showed on Memorial Day. The Chichester Rotary Club and the Township Recreation Department worked very hard. And our police department and public work. And we were able to have a wonderful Memorial Day remembrance. And we honored the Legion Post 951. And I want to thank all the commissioners for coming. And the president for speaking. But I think we have started a time where we now can start to have programs and the Rotary is taking the forefront of that. We will be having a program on 9/11 and Veterans Day. And I hope that everyone in our community will remember that Tuesday is Flag Day. So please, please, please fly that flag. And if you want to put something up to remember Ukraine and what they're going through, that would be fine too. But please raise our flag because we have much not only to be proud of, but to honor those who have served and have given their lives for us. I also want to tell you that Heart and Soul is moving along. I'm glad to see that you're looking at the value statements tonight. We have worked very hard over three years and through the pandemic, and we're ready to move into Phase Four. So I think you're going to be very happy with those seven value statements because they reflect this community. And also to see what we will be coming forward with in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Any other comments for the citizens? If not, we'll move along with the meeting. Excuse me, we need an approval in a minute from May 5th, 2022 Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting and the May 12th, 2022 Board of Commissioners regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. George, were those small corrections I noted made or?
They were.
Done.
Any other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next one will be done by Madam Vice President Nicole.
Thank you. Consider a resolution accepting the seven value statements the Heart and Soul Committee generated on their community outreach efforts.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
The next three will be done by Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you. Consider a motion approving the trash refund list 5-2022. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of $453,871.45. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the hiring of Caitlin Hill for the position of full-time administrative assistance/finance clerk pending the completion of all necessary pre-employment screenings. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next two will be, excuse me, read by Commissioner Mike Guardioso.
Thank you. I'd like to consider a motion approving a fee request reduction for rolling Fatty's food truck from the 2020 food truck licensing fee.
Any questions? Does this include the our health inspector inspecting the truck also?
The only thing that's being granted to them through this is a reduction of the annual food truck licensing fee. They'll be paying a prorated version for the amount of months that they are in operation for 2022. Everything else is as normal.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Like to make a motion accepting the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Two, how many you got? Two each one? You're all yours, Joe. The next, I don't know, six will be read by Commissioner Joe Biaco.
Consider a motion authorizing the township traffic engineer to send a letter to Fendot requesting studies to be completed in reference to prohibiting use of brake retarders on various state roads in Upper Chichester Township.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to prepare and advertise the best specifications for the Tower Circle Basin Stormwater Repair Project.
Next.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution making an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development Commonwealth Financing Authority Watershed Restoration and Protection Grant Program in the amount of $244,840 for the Mill Road Open Space Improvements Phase Two Stream Brook Restoration Project.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution making an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Automated Red Light Enforcement Program.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the solicitor to send a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester to the Pennsylvania Detellies Commission expressing their favorable opinion in the matter of the application of the Department of Transportation of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for approval to order the public above-grade crossing by the reconstruction of the State Route 322, Conchester Highway. Bridge over two tracks of CX, CSS Transportation Incorporated. Dot number 140668B, Upper Chichester Township Delaware Camp.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Madam Vice President, can you read my number?
Yeah.
Seventeen, please.
Consider a motion authorizing the township treasurer to reimburse
Any questions?
Um, yeah, I think last week it was indicated there was a letter of support from the Fire Board. I haven't seen that yet.
From Fire Board? The Executive Committee.
The Executive Committee.
From the chiefs until, yes.
I thought it had to go through the Fire Board.
No.
Okay. Well, I haven't seen the letter. I also, well, I'm not going to look for it now.
Right.
But my other concern is, I think we're incurring a cost that they did in the seventies when John Cairo was chair, um, chief, I think, back in the seventies or eighties. They had the white jackets and they all wanted to get away from them because they were difficult to maintain. Number two, I think that a helmet and vest would probably be appropriate. It would cost a lot less money. If it were extra gear that they were looking for, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I think it's just an expense we don't need to incur at this time.
Well.
A vest and a helmet is in a protective clothing out in the forest scene when the chief is in the middle of everything. So they're the ones, and they did, they did have that discussion about not being white because of the same reason of the upkeep. This gear that they're requesting the help of the township was from the fire department is buying ten sets themselves out of their relief money, which is $50,000. So they're asking for the three chiefs, since the three chiefs are the township chiefs for the Upper Chi Fire Department. They're the ones that run the show on the scene, that they were, they were black coats, white helmets, because the white helmets is the identification of the individual on the scene. No, it would be black. I mean, the gear that they're replacing now is 10 years old. That is the lifespan of the gear. They did apply for some grants. And because it's just 10 years, they were denied the grant. It has to be over 10 years for them to be able to get the grant. This is something they try to do. I know the one, two of the fire companies tried to replace five every so many years. So you don't have that. There was times they were lucky to get one set replaced. Don't see how it's that much of an expense for the township to be able to help the volunteer fire department when they're buying ten sets themselves and they're asking for the chiefs. And then when their relief money or whatever for the next couple of years will be doing a plan of five, five sets of gear every 10 year, or five years. So.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to buying the gear. I'm opposed to, first off, as I suggested last week, I think it should wait until the consolidation is done so we know what's going on, which my understanding is some, there may be some dragging of feet on signing those things.
As I stated.
Has it been signed yet?
As I stated last week, all three resolutions were assigned and given.
Well, we also stated we'd get the letter, and we haven't gotten the letter.
This is true.
Okay. I move the table this. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Table link.
My understanding of it is that they're going to be applying for a grant at the end of the year for suits also.
What I just said a second ago was they applied for the grant, they were denied it because their gear is at the 10-year limit.
Right, but at the end of this year, they will be eligible to apply for the grant.
But they have to wait another year to get another.
Yeah, I also mean, I'm hearing that the suits are, that, I'm hearing that the suits will last throughout the year also. So I think if we just get some clarification from the fire departments, then we can move on with it. But I mean, if there's three votes to table it, then we can table it. If not, then if you have three yes votes to move on, then my suggestion is you take the three yes votes.
They're not going to go away.
Right.
What do you mean? The suits, once they're bought, they're kind of, they put to use. There's three chiefs.
Three chiefs, right. They're ordering their ten, no matter what. But they're just ordering at the same time for the three. So you have a motion on the floor?
I have a question. The ten that they're replacing, are they? How many members do they have? I guess is my question. So they're replacing 10?
I was hoping the chief was here tonight, but I do not know that if they're running as operational in one building. I don't have that number to say how many is running the fire department.
The reason I'm asking, because when we talk about old, having older gear and applying for a grant, I'm assuming they have more than 10 members, in which case you could still apply for the grant for the items, the, you know, any gear that's over 10 years. So that they would be applying for other, a grant to replace other gear, right? That's over 10 years old?
Correct.
Right? Assuming they have more than 10 members.
Right. Oh, yeah, they have more than 10 members, yes. That are running actively, yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what the dynamics are, what is the apprehension about buying three sets of gear? What is, what is that? Where is it coming from?
That's for the chiefs themselves.
No, I'm asking, my concern is with Commissioner Neary and Commissioner Guardioso, what is the apprehension about buying three sets of gear?
Okay. Technically, I think we should be addressing the motion to table.
Well, she had a question.
Well, her question is to the first motion, not to the second motion. Under, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe under Robert's rules order.
I'm going to get my book out for you. But we'll have to, George, roll call, but for the table, for the table.
But you're going to table?
Yeah, we're going to table, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
So I don't have an objection to buying the material. What I have an objection to is the fact that we, first off, we were promised the letter last week. Second, we were, or my understanding is that that it was the executive board that made decisions like this, and the fire companies generally adhered to that.
I just sent you the letter because I just found it. The Executive Steering Committee wanted me to inquire as whether the township will purchase a bulk of gear for the three township chiefs. Existing gear is at the end of their life. Any assistance would be appreciated.
That's your, that's from you?
That's from the township chiefs.
Okay.
Forwarded over to everybody.
Okay.
It's, I'm sitting up here, this is $15,000. The money, this, the fire department and that saves this township is phenomenal. And to worry about everybody, Mike's getting his information from an individual. George thinks the resident, I stated it last week, the resolutions were into the Attorney General last week. There's other things that have to be put together yet, even for the Attorney General. It doesn't happen overnight. They did the hardest part on the consolidation, and that was operational. We approve that, no problem, as long as they're able to afford everything.
Then the motion is for reimbursement. So if something doesn't happen to go through, there is no
Reimbursement.
reimbursement.
Right, but it was always, the way I understood it, that is, they wanted to purchase three white jackets for the three fire chiefs. My understanding is the jackets are fitted out, so township chiefs are rotated out every single year. So my question was, will we be purchasing three new white jackets every year in order to have the fit out? And now, I guess my understanding is, no, they're not purchasing the white jackets.
But the people that take their place will have their jackets all right.
Right, so everybody's going to have the same jacket.
The only thing, yeah, the helmet, the white helmet.
Right, we talked about that last week.
Yeah, I said I was fine with the white helmets.
Yeah.
I just, I just, I know that there's firemen that are all crazy about getting the white jackets.
But they're not getting white jackets now.
And they're okay with all that.
But again, if we're, if we're voting to give them money, that's it. We have nothing to do with the color that they want. We're not dictating what color. The motion is for reimbursement. That's it. They can buy whatever they want.
And we'll, we'll have a roll call during the motion that was out there. George?
Yes, yes.
No.
No.
Yes. Yes. All right, we'll go to our commissioner's report. We'll start out with Madam Vice President Nicole.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Just a recap of some items that came up last week. The Lion King trip, I did speak with our rec director, he said that went very well. Very proud that we have a resident of Upper Chi Chester that's in the show on Broadway. The young man came out and took pictures with all of the the people that went up on about, I think it was a bus of 52, and they all took pictures. And so they, Brian would like to offer another trip to the summer campers. So some of the children that, that be attending summer camp, they're thinking about offering another trip to go and see it. The young man is, I think his his role has been extended to September, so he'll be in that, in that role until September. So we'll hope to be able to take the students up there again. The Juneteenth celebration is next Friday. June 17th in Twin Oaks. It'll be from 5 to 9. Anyone available, come out. It's our first, first time doing this event, so we'll see how it goes. The Planning Committee has been meeting weekly to discuss and prepare for it. Summer camp is going to run for five weeks, June 27th through July 29th. We have 61 campers and 10 counselors. Update on our grants. We've already received $258,000 in grants this year. We're currently awaiting decisions on approximately $1.9 million in grants. And we, we had the motion about Heart and Soul, so thank you for that, that vote. And I think that's it. That's all I have.
Nicole, where's the location for your Juneteenth?
It's going to be at the playground in Twin Oaks.
Okay.
The playground. Arlington and Bellevue. And they'll be, so we'll be grilling out hamburgers, hot dogs. We'll have water ice pretzels. There'll be a DJ, music. Some of the families are going to bring out some of their traditional family recipes and have them some, the ones that can be pre, like prepackaged, right? So nobody's kind of serving or whatever. So we'll see. It's a first time, and it seems like it's coming together. Everyone's kind of excited about it, so we'll see. It's also listed on the county's calendar.
Several historical presentations.
Yes, thank you. And there will be several historical presentations, so there'll be a speaker to talk about the history of Twin Oaks Farms. Harold Robinson will be there to speak about Excelsior Village. And we're confirming the last speaker just talked about Twin Oaks. And Twin Oaks, which is where it is, is the oldest of the three, I believe, the oldest of the three African-American, predominantly African-American communities in Upper Chi.
What time is this clock?
Five.
Okay, oh, good.
Yes, in the evening.
All right.
Anything else that would be brought to the attention of Commissioner Whitaker? Thank you. Now we'll go to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, sir. The tax collector is looking to revamp slash correct his report, so that's not available here. But the collections report is available as well as the DCED report. The financials are available in the office for public review, as well as the Police Department Monthly Report. And that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neary? Now we'll move along. Commissioner Mike Guardioso.
Thank you. Just two items to update. The zoning, zoning heating board had a, had an application come through this past week. It was approved, the variance for the minimum of 250-foot separation between existing building and an intersection for a proposed site driveway. So that one was approved. And also the 650 Cherry Chute Road subdivision land development, we have not seen any submitted plans to date on that. So if it stands the way it is, come next month, we would have to make a determination to vote on it at our caucus meeting. I don't have anything else to report on. If anybody's had any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, just a comment. We had the new Wawa coming in, and now McDonald's is moving. The old Wawa building is vacant, and the other, the old McDonald's building is going to be vacant. I want to see them stay empty and start returning to an ice.
Yes, and, you know, we will, you know, hopefully we will get a ton of soon, but right now.
Any other thing with the Wawa?
They have no active listing on any kind of like a commercial real estate listing, but in speaking with developers that work with Wawa, it is being shopped to the developers that they typically work with.
And I believe, I believe McDonald's owns the old location still, and I don't think they're, if they own it, I don't think they're going to be too eager to bring another. Yes, correct. So.
It's replacing, it's replacing the empty building across the street.
Yeah.
I mean, so, which is really an eyesore.
Yes.
That one.
So they're, they're not keeping both east and westbound McDonald's?
Application that has been submitted to the township is a land development for the relocation of the McDonald's on 322.
That would be probably no. That was, that was the talk at the beginning, to keep one on each side, just like don't regard that as one. Right. Hopefully. All right. Anything else for Commissioner Guardioso? We'll move along to Commissioner Biaco and Commissioner Guardioso needs to step out.
Um, if you guys could be quick, I'll stay for that, and then, and then I'll, I will leave after that.
That's fine.
Just update everything we talked about last week. We're going to start negotiations for the highway enforcement, highway sanitation. Still fine-tuning the final trash group, you know, presented is, and we'll make that move. And I just, I don't know if I need to vote from the board about setting that meeting up for the, with the sewer authority about the stormers, combining a stormer and sewer authority. But I think the solicitor and the engineer should be there.
Oh, I mean, I don't think we need to vote on it because we talked about it in the past, but, man, I'm okay with you. I'm okay with proceeding.
I sent the sewer authority report to everybody, but for me. Do I have any questions?
Not, we'll move along with our professional report. We'll move along with the books yet. That's right, right by mine. Well, I did the one, so sorry about that. We'll move along with my report. Just, I just want to put something out there. The reports are on file, except for the fire marshal, who should have been in here before he went on vacation, because that's what he told us, told me anyway. But thank you for the earlier motion on, for the sets of gear, but just, I stated something at last meeting in May. I've been documenting from May 6th to June 9th tonight. And regarding the EMS here in Upper Chi, and what's going on with closure, Christiana, if it's going to happen, what we don't know. Your report this month even shows how many calls were paid, went out. But just because my concern is still with Delaware Camp, and we
But just because my concern is still with Delaware County, and we, there's no answers out there. Nobody knows who's doing what. But just last month, when I figured I'd document every single day up to about 5:00 or 5:30 tonight, total calls just from May to June now that our medic unit response was dispatched to was 217. Out of that 217, 43 were out of town. So it's not going to get any better if things change, a closure, reduction of their medic unit. And that worries me because it's our taxpayers' money. It's our partnership with Bruce Lynn Fire Company and EMS. And I just wish we would hear something more with the county to see what's going on, because I just got notice today, which I read yesterday in the Chester County paper, and our medic unit got a response from Chester County EMS. They are reducing medic 93 out in Chester County, the same exact thing, money as of September 1st, that is because of the closure of Jennersville and Brandywine. So they're in the same situation, they're reducing it. Like I said, it's a great breakdown we have in a minutes for the medics. 200 calls, that's, you only have 30 days in a month, that's a lot of calls a day. One or two days a month, they may only do three or four calls, but on average, it's six to eight calls a day that they're dispatched. And it's something we really need to be on top of, and I'm hoping our solicitor could find somewhere out, sit down with them, find out what their game plan is. I know everybody's talking to everybody, and to stretch it, excuse me, thinner for Upper Chi, that's what's going to happen. So hopefully, we could get something back to the board here and see what's actually going on. I just wanted to put that number out there. And then same, same way with, I had some, even for the fire department side on the gear, and it's average of $4,700 for that gear. But on the other hand, not only do their gear lifespan is 10 years, and then they have to start trying to replace them, their air packs, or the system that goes on the back and two bottles that comes with it, and they're the same thing, every 10 years, they're $8,000. So this is a lot of costs that they do absorb themselves, and I just wanted to put some numbers out. I have no problem giving anybody any copies of this, and just to let them know, but it's getting scary out there. EMS, fire, even with the fire department, some of their guys got jobs now, and there are less, less people. So it's, it's consolidating, but they're in the same situation. So we need to support them as much as we can, can, whether we're sitting up here another four years, or after next year or not, anybody else coming on board or whatever. It's coming, and it's coming fast. So we really, I mean, we really have to be serious about this because, and it is my understanding, there is a grant out there, and I'm not quite sure if they got it. They did apply for a grant for paid firemen, and I don't want to say they got it, but it sounded pretty good. But at the same time, they want to try to combine the paid farming during the day with the EMS to better that with the same grant. Conkerville does that, but they don't, they don't use the grant money. That's just the way they, they're able to do their system out there. So it's here, and it's coming fast, Chester County. So, anything else anybody has for me? I'd be glad to answer. Sorry, I didn't get, I couldn't even find the letter. There was another letter from the fire department I'll ship to you guys, I did find that one. They want to meet again as a exploratory meeting with the Board of Commissioners, or a few of us, or whatever we need, just on location of a building or whatever. So they just want to come to us and with their ideas and see how we feel. I'll get that letter to you since I did find that one, so. But anything else that would be brought to me? I'd be delighted to answer it.
Ed, I fully support the fire companies. I just think the sooner we get the consolidation done and recognize Engine 10 as our sole fire company, I think, you know, we have a lump, a lump sum of money that we can allocate to one fire company instead of splitting out, split, splitting out the three. And I think once, you know, I think, you know, my position is I like to get that done, and that's why I was a little bit hesitant in voting on the 15,000 for tonight. I like to get that consolidation done. We have one, we have one huge bucket for them to, to pull from, and I think it'd be less, it'd be less confusion. So, but anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
No problem. If not, we'll move on to our professionals. Our engineer, Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did go through my report last week. Just a couple things. Next month, we're probably going to present this to the Planning Commission at their next meeting. We will have a draft of the new stormwater ordinance. That stormwater ordinance is mandated by DEP. We need to have that adopted and presented to, submitted to DEP by the 30th of September. So I do have a draft of that. None of the, none of the impervious coverages have changed based on the MS4 permit that we have. So our table that we typically use for impervious coverage and grading will not change. So it's very minimal changes that, that you're going to see in Upper Chi-Chester Township. Some of the definitions have changed. They're, they're much more clear, I think, than they were in, in the past. So I will submit a copy to, to the board, as well as present that to the Planning Commission, since it will, it will be a standalone ordinance, and we are working on the SADA as well. It will be incorporated into the SADA. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
I met with Lisa this afternoon to collect some signatures for easements on that property, on the properties over on Peach and Plum, and I wanted to thank you publicly for taking the time to do that, Lisa.
Anybody have anything for the engineer? If not, we'll move to the solicitor.
And it is not Michael Pierce tonight.
No, sir, it is not. In fact, I'm very rarely confused with Mr. Pierce. I'm here on his behalf, simply to say that the, his report is on file, and that he instructed me that there were no major changes that had occurred since the, since the workshop meeting, that I should try to answer any questions that you might have, and to bring any back to him that I cannot.
Does anybody have any questions for the solicitor? Thank you very much. That was easy.
Yes, sir, I try to make it easy.
We'll move along to our manager, George Snidels.
Good evening, everybody. I won over most of my report last week. Reports are on file in the office, and just a heads up that next week will be the Planning Charrette for Twin Oaks Village that we're doing with the county planning department and the township professionals. So we'll be meeting here Tuesday morning to meet with all the department heads and the commissioner, and go through some items that we found in the recent survey, and go over a bunch of different various topics that have been brought in by various different planners. In the afternoon, we'll be going out for a site visit of Twin Oaks. We'll be walking the area, looking at all the different items that come up. And then Thursday, we'll be back here to do some brainstorming sessions and kind of put together our boards, which will be presented to the public at the Juneteenth event. We will be asking them to provide feedback on which types of improvements they would like to see in their neighborhood. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything to be brought to the attention to the manager? George, how are we making out with the old meeting house tavern and the county and trying to clean that up, which are, is the county on anything with that, or trying to move along with the blightess?
The taxes have been paid, all back taxes have been paid on that building by the mortgage holder, and we have a new contact for that property that we have engaged this week.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? Need a motion to our jury?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So, good night.